I call a meeting to order. With pleasure, allegiance to the flag. My pleasure, allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Roll call.
All right. David Kent.
Yeah.
Stephanie Holter.
Here.
Peter Julia.
Present.
Alec Hammond.
Here.
And Tom McGlaughlin is not present tonight.
The minutes of the previous meeting were distributed.
Looked fine to me.
I didn't find any problems.
As always, you guys do a great job with the minutes.
Thank you.
We had a chance to review them prior to the meeting. Millie, got any issues with the minutes?
No. I move to accept.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Did you... Did you vote?
I did vote, but I had it stained from the meeting, but I was present, so I read it through.
Yep. Good.
Ambiguous vote.
All right, we're going to move to applications and public hearings. Shift to the public session for the first application.
Hello, how's it going?
Name and address for the record here.
My name's Ben Downing. I live at 5 Downing Drive in Plymouth.
Thank you. Go right ahead with telling us what this is all about.
Sure. So, yeah, to give you a quick rundown, I'm basically hoping to build four individual duplex units on two separate but adjoining pieces of property, and those pieces of property are located on Texas Hill Road. They're about a mile, half-mile up from the Fox Park Pond and the four-way intersection down there, so pretty close to town. And they're up there on the right-hand side. The purpose of building these duplex units is going to be to rent them out to young professionals and young families, and to use them as, you know, workforce housing for the Plymouth area. I think that, you know, in speaking with some local business leaders, there's obviously a housing, long-term housing shortage here in Plymouth, and I think that these duplexes will go, you know, help and assess that, address that need for the town, and I think they'll be a great addition to the area. Yeah. So, that's pretty much the plan. Would you like to take a look at the site plan? I think that that would be a...
I think you should work your way through the requirements for a special exception.
Oh, sure, I can do that. Yeah, absolutely. So... Pardon me. So, explain... Would you like me to just go through these each by each, or...
We have six criteria, and we have to be able to find that each one of them's been met, so it'd help if you talked about each one of them from your perspective.
Sure. Okay. So, explain how the site is an appropriate location and adequate size for the use. The site is in the single-family residential zone, so it's well-suited to this kind of suburban development. The location currently contains a mix of single-family, two-family, multifamily dwellings on properties of various sizes. One duplex unit is located directly across the street, and there is a... That was granted a special exception in 1989, and that's been included as part of your application packet. You know, the proposed lot is of appropriate size, you know, according to all the town ordinances and such. The lot requires 66,060 square feet for two duplex buildings with... Two duplex buildings per lot. One of the lots is 117,000 square feet, and the other one is about 98, I believe. Yeah. So, they meet that criteria as well, and obviously they'll be constructed with all, you know, within the dimensional requirements and, you know, setbacks and all that sort of stuff. So, they are of appropriate... In an appropriate location and certainly of adequate size for the lots.
Okay.
Do you have any questions on that portion?
Terms of the size of the lot? Anybody have a question about the size of the lot? The appropriateness of the location?
Is there going to be paving?
I'm not planning to pave anything. I was hoping to just do a gravel driveway. That's kind of the plan. Yep. Yeah. There'll be one curb cut per lot. We'll get into this if you look at the site plan. We can do that in a minute. But one curb cut per lot, and they'll kind of go up and fork into a Y kind of shape, and there'll be a duplex unit at the end of each curb cut or each driveway. Yeah. Yep.
How is the... I know you haven't been to planning board yet, but can you explain the visibility in terms of the driveway, coming and going?
Yeah. So, how do you... Do you mean visibility of the driveway, like, up from the road?
Yes.
Going to be set back, or is it going to be really close to the road?
The driveways are going to go pretty far back into the property. The biggest property is 2.7 acres, and the smaller one's 2.25, so we don't have, you know, an infinite amount of room to work with. I would prefer to set the buildings further away from the road, if possible, and to maintain kind of a landscape barrier, pockets of trees. Again, you know, I mentioned that, you know, we were talking beforehand, but my family owns a house directly across from these lots, and my parents built it in 1989. You know, they have no intention of moving. I have no intention of selling it, so, you know, maintaining the, you know, the look of my neighborhood is pretty important to me.
It's mixed, though, that neighborhood, right? There's some homes that are right up on the road, and then there's others...
Yeah, oh, yeah. There's definitely a mix of both, but, you know, I've kind of come to admire the view out my front window, and I certainly don't want to go chopping all the trees down.
And is your house up Downing Drive, too?
Yes, yeah, the house is up. Yep. And, yeah, that duplex, that special exception notice and decision in the packet is also on Downing Drive. Yeah. And that's been in operation for 30 years. We've had a number of really great tenants in there. One guy's been in there for 15 years, and, you know, I'm really hoping I can replicate the success of that property, you know, directly across the road. And I think it'll be a really good situation, so...
You didn't really answer the question, which I was hoping you would. If I were driving out of your driveway...
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah.
Would I have to worry about cars coming both ways?
No. Well, you would have good visibility coming out of the driveway. There's, you know, Texas Hill, as you may know, is a pretty windy road. There's lots of portions where... And my house included is on a blind corner, but both those driveways should have good visibility coming in both directions. And I think I do note that a little bit further down. It talks about safety and all that sort of stuff, but yes, yep. And I also will maintain that visibility moving forward as well, so if there are any branches or anything, I'll be sure to get rid of that stuff. Any more questions on the second criteria there? Would you like me to move on?
Sure, go right ahead.
Okay. So, explain how the use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use is located. A lot of these answers you'll find are a little bit similar to the last, so, like I mentioned before, there's a large mix of single-family, multifamily, and duplex units already in the area. There's a large, a wide variety of property sizes, so, you know, the... One of the properties abutting our land is 20 acres. I think the land that our house sits on is seven and a half, and then, you know, my other abutter on these properties has got a .46 acre lot. So, there's a wide variety of lots, and, you know, like you mentioned, some buildings are close to the road, and some are further away. Let's see. Like I said, we've already got a duplex directly across the street, so, you know, there's kind of a precedent set there. And, you know, yeah, you know, we live in a rural and kind of... A semi-rural and kind of a tranquil part of Plymouth right there, and, you know, yes, I'd like to put some units in, but I also really care about maintaining that quality of kind of life and character, so... How am I doing so far?
Any questions from the board?
No, can I?
No, currently.
Okay.
It's going to be a well, right?
Yeah, so if you... Again, we can go through the...
Both under one well, or is it two wells?
So, I'm showing two wells on the site plan right now. It's really hard to say. I haven't done any geotechnical borings or anything like that yet, and, you know, once you... You really have to tap for the well and see what you get for pressure. And obviously, that all has to go through the DES as well, I believe. So, you know, ideally, I could feed them all off the same well. That would be fantastic, but, you know, it's more than likely I'll have to do... I'll have to do two separate wells, but... Yep.
I see you've brought Mr. French along. Is he going to describe the lay of the land or the like?
He can, if you like him to.
I have some plans, if you'd like to...
Let's go with that.
Is that this?
This is conceptual, because we haven't finished everything out there yet, but basically, yeah, like he was... Ben was mentioning, most of the units are going to be set right away to the back of the road. There might be one that's closer to the road just due to the photography of the layout. And we haven't done it... We haven't gone in and done test pits or anything yet, so that, you know, things are subject to change a little bit based on where those areas come out and then where wells can go and radius. Like Ben said, we did show two with the proper radiuses for two units each. And just to address your visibility question, they're on... They're really on the west side of the road for visibility, looking up and down the road from where those quadrants come out. They both have more than adequate visibility to safety purposes.
Good.
Agreed.
And I'd like to add, for that house that is close to the road, I would more than likely plant a couple trees just as kind of like a landscape buffer along there. You know, it's not a bad view, but, you know, privacy is nice for tenants as well, so, you know, I'm more than willing to address that kind of stuff.
Question?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a question. Ben and members of the gallery community, my name's Pete Julia. I am doing business with Kevin French, so I'm happy to recuse myself, if you'd like, or I can participate. I'll leave that up to you.
You're more than welcome to participate.
Okay, then I have a question.
Sure.
The question is, did you do any alternative analysis? That is, if you merged the lots, could you do a cluster subdivision and get more density? Could you build more?
I absolutely could build more. Again, you know, I could... I could, yeah, I could merge the lots. That would give me more space. I could do... If I did single-family buildings, I could, you know, load these things up, you know. I spoke with Joseph about it at some point, but, you know, I could probably, with the cluster development or the residential co-location that's part of the zoning ordinance now, I could probably fit six or seven buildings in here, and I don't really think that that would serve to maintain the quality of my neighborhood at all, you know. I think that, yeah, I need to find a line for, you know, something that's economically viable versus... And what's going to maintain the quality of my neighborhood, and I think that I'm walking that line really well with this layout here.
So, this board, as you know, is only interested in the use.
Yeah.
And you'll obviously have to go in front of the planning board at a later date, which is why I asked that density question. One thing that, again, is not applicable tonight, but you may get asked at a future date, is what would prevent these units in the future from being condominiumized?
That's a good question. I'm not entirely sure. I'd have to look into it. Other than my ownership, I'm not sure. I have no intent of condominiumizing any units. You know, I think that the point here is, you know, to provide some good housing and also, you know, to have a kind of a long-term source of income after I pay off, you know, whatever it costs to build these things. And I really don't plan on selling any of this stuff. You know, like I said, it's in my backyard, and, you know, I intend to hold on to this property, hopefully, for as long as I live, so...
Thank you.
It's not in the cards for me.
You will be living in one of them? Is that the plan?
Yeah, I'll be living in one of them probably for at least a year, likely more than that, two, three, four, five. I don't want to live there. I don't want to live there forever, but yes, I will be my own tenant, I guess.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Are the members of the public who would like to speak either in favor or opposed to the application?
Howdy. I guess I'll come up. Alex Ray, just speaking about the entity that's considering this project, just that I've worked with the family, his father, for 40 years, and they do things right, and even though he's a young guy here, he's following the good footsteps.
Can I interrupt and ask a question? Could you just state your address, are you a Plymouth resident?
Sure. Alex Ray, and I live in Holness.
Holness, okay.
Anybody have an objection to him speaking?
No.
Okay. And just, I just know the family for 40 or 50 years, and they're quality folks, and never had a problem, and he's done a lot of buildings for me, his father, and he's out enjoying vacation down in the islands, so the strength of Ben is very good. He's physically working on the... For the company, and so I just believe in the family, and that's enough for me.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions from the board?
Steve Whitman, 85 Summit Road. So, I just wanted to speak in favor. I've talked to Ben prior to tonight. I've lived in Parker Street for a long time, spent time in this part of Texas Hill Road and over at Fox Park in my free time, and I think it's a great project. I think it's in line with what the master plan talks about. I think it's in line with what the town has been working on through the housing grant and thinking about new units, and to think about some small, affordable units to be located close to town for people of Ben's age or people older than me, whoever decides to live there, I think it'd be a welcome addition, so just wanted to share my support.
Nope. A follow-up question. We've heard "small," we've heard "affordable," and I don't recall reading it in the application. What are the sizes of the units? Are they two-bedroom, three-bedroom, one-bedroom?
Yeah, so they're two-bedroom, one-bathroom units. I have some architectural plans, if you'd like to look at them. I'm more than happy to share that. They're 2,300 square feet per building and 1,150 square feet per unit, give or take a couple square feet. They also will have, well, depending on the results of the geotech borings, but I'm planning to provide full basements underneath them as well. I've rented the past couple of years, and storage was a big issue for me, and you never know how much crap you have until you move out, and, you know, that was a problem, and it's something I'd like to alleviate for my tenants, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone else?
Any other questions or anything?
Cool. Close the public session.
Any written letters of support, Joseph?
No letters received on this application.
Anybody online?
Nope, no one on Zoom.
All right. And then's the public session, then. We could... Let's put some findings of fact together. We can.
It's a 2.7 acre... Do you want to do them together?
I think so, because fundamentally, it's the same application repeated.
I was going to say it's 2.7 acre lot, but I feel like there's two lots, right? What's the other size?
2.25.
2.25.
They're not identical size.
Not quite.
2.7 and then 2.5.
I think we ought to start with the application.
Is it complete?
It requires a special exception.
Yes, that's a good one.
To be able to have two units on a single lot.
In a single-family residence zoning area. I do know that area, though, and there... It's not all single-family residences.
Well, he's got across the street as a two-family.
Right, and then if you go further up the road, there's a six unit, I think, that apartment building, right? So, there's... It's a very mixed neighborhood.
With similar multifamily units...
Yes.
...in the surrounding area.
With rental units, too, right?
Correct.
There's no safety issue with the visibility on the road?
That there was a previous ruling that allowed for a similar structure across the street.
1989, that was a while ago.
I remember it.
I can't... There's no town water system, so there's no burden in that regard.
He made mention in his application that there would be plowing service, if I remember correctly.
He'd be providing plowing.
Providing plowing and all that, so...
For the driveways, huh? I don't see any additional resources for the town besides if families moved in, we might get some children for the schools, which I don't think would be terrible. I think our schools can handle that.
Agreed.
In line with the water is also sewer, so there's no utility, right?
Right. Yeah. He has four different septic systems, one for each dwelling, or two for each dwelling.
We should make a finding also. This not... Has not yet been to the planning board.
They procedurally have to come to us first, don't they?
They go both ways. And did we... We should have a fact that was... Did we have a fact that there's no public input other than the people who are here?
No one has stated that yet, other than you just did.
Good.
That'd be a good one. I was surprised there's no butters, right?
Well, in a similar way, there were two members of the public that spoke in favor.
Spoke in favor.
One, not a resident, but a business owner in town, and the other a resident.
Correct.
I think another finding of fact is the applicant's admittance of essentially, my language, underdeveloping the parcels and keeping the unit size small so that it would meet a more affordable housing and be more attractive for a greater population.
Public interest.
Public interest. I think that is important, yep.
It would more than fit into the neighborhood, right? It would...
Yeah.
They'd be nice. They'd be nice units.
It does not conflict with what's in the neighborhood now.
Yeah. I think it would maintain the rural character.
All right. About it?
Maybe a finding of fact about the number of units?
Should.
Two per... Two duplexes per lot. And around 1,150 square feet with a full basement.
Per unit.
Per unit, yeah.
With the addition of a cellar, perhaps?
With the addition of a cellar, yeah.
TBD. Do we have any insight on, just because it's a hot topic right now, tax implications?
Taxes.
That would be raised?
They pay more money in taxes on the buildings.
Yeah.
It's not our business, I don't think.
No, it's up to him. In addition to the zoning, another finding of fact is that it appears, based on the conceptual plan, that all the buildings will meet the setbacks for each of the lots.
Yeah.
That's a good one.
And because of a less dense layout, it is likely that native or natural screening will remain in place also, as testified by the applicant.
But that will be an issue taken up, I'm sure, by the planning board.
Probably.
Okay. Want to read back the findings of fact that we've got?
Sure.
One more.
Oh, you have one?
Ah, one more, yeah. It appears to me that the applications, both of them, the individual ones for MAP 221-068 and also MAP 221-070, as prepared and filed, were complete.
It's a nice one.
Not lacking.
All right. So, the fact...
If we can go through them one at a time.
Sure. So, the lots measure 2.7 acres and 2.25 acres? Or I suppose the two lots measured 2.7 and 2.5 acres?
Add into that in a single-family zone?
2.25 acres.
2.25 acres in single-family residential zone. The proposed use...
All in favor of that particular finding of fact?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous?
The proposed use requires a special exception to allow two-family dwellings in the single-family residential zoning district.
Aye.
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 Unanimous.
All right. The neighborhood has a mix of housing, including rental units.
I think that should also say...
And multifamily.
Multifamily as well.
Of similar character.
Right.
The neighborhood has a mix of housing, including rental units and multifamily of similar character.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous.
There will be no safety issue with visibility from the proposed driveways?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Actually, can we add as described and put forth? There will be no additional danger as described.
They're uncertain about the layout at this point until they go to the planning board.
That's why I...
That's one of the difficulties.
That's why I added that last part.
So, there will be no safety issue with the visibility from the proposed driveways as described by the applicant?
Aye.
But planning board approval is required.
But planning board approval is required.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Abstain, okay.
Right, in a previous ruling, the zoning board permitted a similar building across the street in 1989.
Aye.
Aye.
No town water is available to the site.
Aye.
And sewer, water slash sewer?
I have that as a separate one, but I can combine them.
Aye.
The owner will provide plowing of all driveways.
Aye.
Necessary fact, but it'll...
Aye.
And then I had a separate, no town sewer is available to the proposed development, which will be served by septic.
Aye.
The application has not yet been to the planning board.
Aye.
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 There was no public input beyond those present in the audience, which were two members of the public who spoke in favor, one business owner and one resident.
Aye.
The applicants admitted to underdeveloping the parcel and keeping the unit small to ensure public interest is met.
Aye.
Could you reread that?
The applicants admitted to underdeveloping the parcel and keeping units small to ensure the public interest is met.
Okay.
The proposed use does not conflict with the rural character, with the surrounding rural character. The proposed use does not conflict with the rural character, with the surrounding rural character.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, but that's very similar to a previous one.
Yeah, it is.
It is.
Might want to combine the two.
The neighborhood has a mix, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can combine them.
Sure.
Yeah.
All right, two duplexes are proposed for each lot with each unit around one-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty square feet, also to include a possible seller.
Aye.
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 Wait, it appears, based on the concept plan, that all buildings will meet the applicable setbacks?
Aye.
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 The underdevelopment of the lot allows for maintenance of natural vegetation?
Aye.
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 Okay with amending that, just make sure the word screening or buffering is in there with of natural vegetation. I believe the applicant said something to the effect that I don't intend to clear-cut it. All right.
Okay. We also need a finding that the two applications are substantially the same. Is that not accurate?
I think, I think that is accurate, you've said it, but we didn't put it in a finding of fact.
Mm-hmm.
Since we're essentially ruling them both at the same time.
Right.
Very important.
Aye.
All right, so, we have two applications and we should independently vote on each.
Which one first?
So.
One oh-sixty-eight.
Two-two-one oh-six-eight?
Correct.
Okay.
That's listed first on the agenda.
It's the one-twelve Texas Hill Road.
I'm going to close the discussion. All those in favor of approving two-two-one oh-six-eight? Say aye.
You want to go through the criteria?
We did just do that, okay.
No, we didn't.
Fine, fair enough. Explain how the site is appropriate location and adequate size. Is it allowed by the ordinance and the answer is?
Yes, by special exception.
Yes.
Yeah, dude.
It is by special exception. Yeah, okay, thank you.
True. True.
Explain how the specific site is an appropriate location and an adequate size for the use.
True or yes?
Yes.
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 The use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use will be located.
True.
It is true.
True. There'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians.
True.
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 Use will not place excessive or undue burden on the town services and facilities.
True.
Yes.
True.
True.
There would be no significant effect resulting from the such use upon the public health, safety and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located.
True.
Yeah.
True. Having gone through the criteria and all the answers being true, can I have a motion?
Motion to accept the proposal, the application.
Two-two-one slash oh-six-eight?
Yes, two-two-one slash zero-six-eight.
Second?
So moved and seconded, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous? Which brings us to two-two-one oh-seven-oh. While the finding, the facts are the same, the proposed use is only those allowed in the ordinance by special exception?
True.
True.
True, unanimous? Specific site is appropriate location and of adequate size for the use?
True.
True.
Unanimous? Use as developed will not adversely affect the character of the area in which the proposed use would be located?
True.
True.
True, unanimous? There'll be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians?
True.
True.
True, unanimous? Use will not place an excessive or undue burden on the town services and facilities?
True.
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 Unanimous? There will be no significant effect resulting from the use upon the public health, safety and general welfare of the neighborhood in which the use would be located?
True.
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 So moved to accept the application?
Yes.
Two-two-one oh-seven-zero?
Oh, second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept the application. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous? Both are approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thanks for being so patient tonight, I really appreciate it.
It's a very well-written application.
And well-prepared, yes. I almost wanted to put that in the finding of facts.
I think she did.
It was the best prepared one since I've been on the board.
I know, right?
Yeah, easy, easy.
Yeah, sure.
Shut the, shut the mics off.
Okay. Moving on, is there any unfinished business?
I do have one item, just to advise the board, I included in your packet a memo from the New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development, which does describe some recent changes to planning and zoning laws in New Hampshire. Nothing which has an immediate pressing effect on the zoning board. There is a slight change to who has the authority to appeal or ask for a rehearing on a zoning board decision. It's no longer any person aggrieved, it is specifically limited now to the select board, a party to the action, or in a butter, so.
And they changed the definition of on a butter?
They did, yeah, so anybody directly across the street or stream or anybody in a perpendicular line projected directly across the street and then out fifty feet on either side of the property from that point, so it picks up in some cases, extra abutters compared to the previous definition that if you have sort of a, I think they called it like the catty corner abutters, where you are just a few feet off across the street, they're now included in the definition of an abutter. But not necessarily if they're on the same side of the street, only if they're on the opposite side of the street, but it is a little bit of a broader definition, the other changes largely are not particularly directly related to the zoning board, some impact the zoning ordinance, which the planning board has proposed a zoning amendment to address one of these, to bring our ordinance into compliance, and then a lot of other ones are just maybe of general interest, but, but don't directly impact anything that, that we have currently here in Plymouth.
Do you have, all those changes available to email?
Yeah.
Could you email it?
Yeah, definitely.
Just to review?
I brought a piece of business for the board. A few years ago, we ran into a problem where, where notices would be published. Not the town hall and not out at the Hannafords or whatever, but what newspaper would be used? And we got in a debate between the Laconia Sun and the Plymouth Record. Laconia Sun, of course, is easier because it's published more often and the deadlines that the town has of ten days, when you get into a problem with holidays, becomes a problem. You can't meet the deadline for the newspaper and get the requisite number of days in. So I talked with Joseph about the current statute says you have to have at least five days prior to the meeting. But there's nothing to prevent the town in its ordinance from creating, we've got a ten-day rule, from changing that to a fifteen-day rule or an eighteen-day rule, which would never give us a problem with the Plymouth Record and holidays. I think it'd be wise if we could get the planning board to adopt a change in the zoning ordinance on the notice requirement to fifteen or eighteen days, that would be what I would suggest, I don't know how the board feels about that.
I can't see it producing a burden on anybody that is serious about approaching the zoning board either. I mean, they're obviously going to have their plans in place, if they're by by minute, five days is going to be throwing a wrench in the system, they're not prepared.
That's how I looked at it, they, there's a deadline and you're going to meet it.
Yeah.
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 One way or the other.
As long as it's clear.
I told Joseph, if it's feasible, is it too late for a citizen's petition?
So the, the window has closed for a citizen petition. But it's certainly something I can also just make the planning board aware of it too, so even if they aren't able to pick it up this year, they can have it on their radar.
Make life a lot easier for future boards.
Yeah, so, yeah, the, that was, the, one of the pieces that came up for this particular application was that, that very question of holiday deadlines for the Plymouth Record Enterprise, in fact, in order for us to get a to get a notice in the paper that ran the week prior to this meeting, that is Thursday, that's, you know, the weekly paper, it runs, you know, that's the day it runs, but in order to actually get a notice in that paper, we would have needed the application information well before our actual application deadline. So by meeting the application deadline, the application is actually coming in after the publication deadline for notices. So we did meet the requirement, but typically we always do the Record Enterprise because that's what the board, both boards have expressed a preference for that. Unless it's an absolute emergency and there, and there is truly no other way than to go in the Daily Sun, which is daily.
This idea would be for both hearings and rehearings.
I think it's important to be consistent on which newspaper we're publishing those notices in for the community, right? If we were to normally do it in the Record Enterprise and then one time just do it at the Laconia Sun, someone could miss that, right? So I would, I would think it'd be important to be consistent.
Yeah, definitely, and that's what we've always done in the, you know, in the Record Enterprise, that's what both the planning board also had discussed in the past, that the Record Enterprise is the preferred option and I agree that consistency is important.
Yeah.
I think as Malik says, as long as the applicant knows what the deadline is, the deadline is a deadline. Any other business?
Happy New Year.
You want to think something out?
No.
Okay.
I could advise too, if the board is interested, there is a webinar coming up, New Hampshire Office of Planning and Development is they, they hold their monthly Planning Lunches at Noon webinars, which are, which are really great. One that's coming up is Building and Development on Class Six Roads, which doesn't come up that often, but Plymouth has enough Class Six Roads that it does come up and the zoning board does actually have a a role to play in some of those applications, not that any application in Plymouth has gotten to that point, but there is kind of a unique carve-out in the state law on, that pertains to building on Class Six Roads that could result in an appeal to the zoning board, that specifically allows for an applicant to appeal that, that certain type of decision to the board.
How do you define a Class Six Road?
Like, which ones are our Class Six Roads?
So, in Plymouth, it's portions of Hunt Road, it's Pike Hill Road, it's a portions of Binks Hill Road and portions of Old Stagecoach Road are the ones that I'm aware of.
What are their characteristics?
So it is not town maintained, it's a public way, but not maintained by the town, so some of them are.
I feel like an old logging road.
Yeah, we, we have.
A little more than that, though, they're defined by right-of-way, it's often a limited right-of-way, it can be as little as twenty, thirty feet, somewhat depending how old they are. Most of them are thirty, thirty-three feet, you know, the old six-rod. Yeah, a couple of rod, whatever that is.
Sixty-six feet.
Not that big, unlikely to be that big. But they have definition, they just don't have development.
And they are not town maintained, we have had a couple of you know, RSA six-seven-four colon forty-one is the, the state law that actually preempts local authority to issue building permits on these roads unless we follow the very specific process outlined by the statute, which requires that it actually, the town require a notice of the limits of municipal liability to be recorded at the registry of the deeds and actually individual building permits under the law unless the select board has adopted a blanket policy for a particular Class Six Road. Each permit actually has to go to the select board after review and comment by the planning board, but there is also a carve-out where the applicants can apply to the zoning board under the, under the statute, so it's a little bit of a, you know, it's.
Big process.
It's quite a process and it's unique because there's really not much else, there are a few, but there's not that many other areas where there's a very express preemption that you must, if you have frontage on only a Class Six Road, you must follow this process to build.
I think I'll pass.
I'd actually be interested if you can email me the info on it.
I will send you the link.
Cool.
No other business, the meeting is adjourned.